For this Monday, June 17, 2024. We're meeting in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act here in the Millbrae City Council Chambers. We're also broadcasting to maximize transparency on Zoom and MCTV, and members of the public may also dial in by phone. Members of the public are encouraged to provide input and comments on items on our agenda to maximize time for getting everyone's comments in. Speakers may be subject to a three-minute time limit. Also, if there are persons wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight, we encourage you to fill out a speaker slip and turn it into the staff. Also, if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, it would also be good to fill out a speaker slip also. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if we can do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Thank you.
Thank you. All commissioners are present.
And now, if you're able to, I'd invite you to stand and, with me, recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. We also have a standing agenda item to just recognize the ancestral homes of the Ramatis Shaloney people who inhabited this area some time ago. Moving on to our first agenda item, we have Agenda Review. Are there any comments, changes to tonight's agenda? Good, no changes? Okay. Then we'll go on to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Meeting Minutes, and this is for previous meeting minutes of June 3. For the commissioners, do you have any comments, corrections, edits to the meeting minutes of June 3?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Davis to approve.
All second.
And a second. We could take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
I appreciate all the commissioners for looking at the meeting minutes at a time, so we can go through that quickly. We have Agenda Item Number Three, Public Communications. This is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. And I don't see anybody here wishing to speak. Do we have speaker slips or any raised hands online?
We do not have any speaker slips or raised hands.
Okay. Then we'll move on from Public Communications. And moving right along, we're moving pretty fast tonight. We're getting to Agenda Item Number Four, and this is for a public hearing for 1165 Fernwood Drive. Looks like Jennifer has a presentation. Take it away, Jennifer.
Good evening, Chair Wong and members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbrae. And tonight, I will be presenting the project at 1165 Fernwood Drive. Please note, when the agenda and meeting packet was published, we did receive one additional correspondence for this project, and that was emailed out to all of the planning commissioners, and there is also a hard copy on the dais in front of you. So this is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a 390-square-foot second-story addition and a 378-square-foot first-floor addition to an existing two-story residence, and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing nonconforming upper-story floor-side setback, and an exception request to allow the upper floor to can a lever one foot, three inches over the lower floor where a 10-foot upper-floor front setback is required in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. This map shows the project's location. The project is located in the Meadows neighborhood. The residence is in the R1 single-family zone. It is an interior lot about 5,460 square feet. The existing residence is two stories, about 2,423 square feet, and the project proposal is for the construction of a 390-square-foot second-story addition and a 378-square-foot first-floor addition to an existing two-story single-family residence. Here's the existing site plan. The existing two-story residence is in blue. The proposed site plan, the first and second-story addition area, is located in the front of the home. The front yard landscaping and rear yard open space requirements will be met, and a new street tree will be planted in the front. The project also includes future space for an attached accessory dwelling unit, and the required one-car parking space for the ADU will be provided on the driveway. The ADU entrance will be located in the rear of the property. The proposed first floor includes an attached two-car garage, a playroom, and space for a future 621-square-foot attached ADU. The ADU will have one bedroom, one bathroom, a laundry room, and a kitchen and dining room. The proposed second floor includes a primary bedroom, primary bathroom, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a study room, kitchen, dining room, living room, and a rear balcony. The proposed front elevation, the proposed residence will retain elements of a two-story 1950s contemporary-style design with some updated contemporary design features. There will be a smooth stucco finish, brick veneer feature, and a black-colored shingle roof. The front windows will have shutters, and there will be light fixtures around the garage and at the front entry area. This elevation shows that upper-story first-floor can a levering over the lower floor, which will require the setback exception request. Existing upper-story left-side setback is not met currently. The proposed project is extending the existing nonconforming side setback, which this will require the conditional use permit. And then same with the proposed right side. The existing upper-story right-side setback is not met, so the proposed project is extending the existing nonconforming side setback, which will require the conditional use permit. Here's the proposed rear elevation. There will be a balcony in the rear, and there's the entrance to the ADU. As shown on the proposed left and right side elevation slides, the proposed addition is extending the existing nonconforming upper-story side setbacks on both sides, therefore requiring a conditional use permit. In order to meet the upper-story side setback requirements, the proposed upper floor would need to have a minimum 10-foot side setback on the left and a minimum four-foot side setback on the right, and that's measured from the exterior wall below. However, the existing home and surrounding homes in the neighborhood lack upper-story side setbacks, so allowing the CUP will be in keeping with and maintaining a similar design with the other properties in the neighborhood. So this slide shows the new walls will be in the front, and then the existing exterior upper-story walls are in the rear. The new side walls will be in line with the existing exterior upper-story walls instead of being set in on both sides. The proposed work is not intensifying the degree of nonconformity and will be consistent with the upper-story setbacks of the existing home. In order to meet the upper-story front setback requirement, the proposed upper floor would need to have a minimum 10-foot setback from the exterior wall below. However, the proposed upper floor can a lever is one foot, three inches over the lower floor, therefore requiring a setback exception. Also, the existing home and neighborhood lack an upper-story front setback, so allowing the setback exception will be maintaining a similar design with the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. So the existing home is shown on the left, and the proposed is on the right. The proposed addition is maintaining its existing form, and the upper floor can a lever is over the lower floor above the garage for both the existing and proposed. This is a view of the proposed 3D rendering. A total of six adjacent owner consultation forms were sent out to the adjacent neighbors. One form was returned in support of the project. One form was returned in opposition, and the other four forms had no response. One of the neighbors across the street at 1166 Fernwood Drive noted their concerns that extending forward would not match the existing homes in the neighborhood. These are the photos of the adjacent homes. The proposed two-story massing is similar to the massing found in the neighborhood, and the character of the neighborhood is large two-story homes that lack upper-story setbacks and have an upper floor that can a lever is over the lower floor. The proposed addition is in keeping with the existing form and the location of homes in the neighborhood. In order to approve the design review permit, the Planning Commission must make the following findings. These design review findings can also be found in Attachment One of the staff report. The following conditional use permit findings must be met, and these are also found in Attachment One of the staff report. And then the following exception findings must also be met, and these are found in Attachment One. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony, and approve a design review permit application to allow a 390-square-foot second-story addition and a 378-square-foot first-floor addition to an existing two-story residence, and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing nonconforming upper-floor side setbacks, and an exception request to allow the upper floor to can a lever one foot, three inches over the lower floor where a 10-foot upper-floor front setback is required in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. Staff, the applicant, and property owners are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So we'll have a process where we'll be able to allow people from the public to speak, but for now, we have this process. So after Jennifer's presentation, we just prompted if there are any questions, clarifications from city council members for the project, from the staff.
Just one clarification, Jennifer. So on page five of the staff report, second paragraph, it said included, the conditional use permit description is included as Attachment Four? I didn't see Attachment Four, but I don't think, there isn't additional information I'm looking for either. Just wanted to see if that was typo or if there's formality.
Yeah, so Attachment Four would have the project description, and then under the project description, there is a CUP request and a setback exception request.
So is that part of Attachment?
Sorry, that was for Attachment Three. Attachment Four is the proof of owner consultation forms.
So it's the consultation forms. It's not the CUP. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, clarifications?
Yeah, maybe just a question for staff. Since the additional correspondence was basically talking about a situation where there was a fatality on a construction site, maybe staff could tell us a little bit about how they ensure safety on construction sites and residential neighborhoods, what the process is, what your general guidelines and procedures are.
When a permit has been issued for a project, the inspector will go out and make sure that safety precautions are all installed or set up, and that's a standard procedure that we have. I confirmed with the building inspector that situations where might need a little bit more attention, we would hold a pre-construction meeting with the applicant, contractor, homeowner, just to let them know what the safety precautions are, so that there's the expectation that they will be set up early in the construction process and throughout the whole construction process. As inspections are conducted on the property, the inspector will make sure that those safety precautions are all being met. So we'll keep an eye out on that throughout the construction of this project, should it be approved tonight.
Yeah, since this was brought up at this point, our... I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it the same designer? I mean, according to this, we're not sure.
The applicant is here, and he...
Well, you're going to do your presentation, so you might include that.
We can wait.
No, no.
Okay, so we'll call the architect up. Architect appears to have a response.
Yeah, because at this point, we're not really sure, right? We'll get it from the applicant. Okay.
Maybe one more question. So it was mentioned in the staff report that it seems like what's being proposed is broadly consistent with what's in the neighborhood, and yet the applicant has to come for, has to apply for a conditional use permit and an exception to basically, at least it seems to me, build something that's the same facade, the same wall proximity to the side of the lot. So just so I understand, right, so if any other homeowner in that neighborhood were to try to extend their, to build something broadly the same, they would also have to come for a CUP, they would also have to come for an exception to build something that's consistent with every other house on the street, right?
Yeah, that's correct. We have development standards in our R1 zoning and R1 LL that speak to upper-story setbacks. We require that the front of the upper-story setback 10 feet, and then the side will set back a certain amount of feet depending on how close the lower floor is. And that's broadly applied to every property in that zoning district. So for example, the R1, they all have the same zoning standards. Now, that approach helps to reduce the mass of a house, as is viewed from the street. In situations like this in neighborhoods where there's predefined or established form, the goal is really to maintain consistency with the neighborhood character, because if we were to apply the strict standards of the code, it could result in a house that is not what the code intended it to be. So, and that's one thing about our code that we're looking at as we go through the residential objective design standards, is do we have special regulations for neighborhoods that have a certain form? But that could be tricky and very complicated, because you'd have to, you'd have to apply it throughout all zoning districts, and there could be very different neighborhoods that have different forms. So we'll take a look at it, but the good thing about having the exception process is that it does allow relief from the code, which this is what this is intended for.
Yeah.
If the commission doesn't mind me continuing on this topic, I'm glad you brought up the residential design standards. You know, could this be solved via some mechanism like an overlay that would apply to a couple of blocks and say, you know, "We noticed that in this neighborhood, the setbacks are not, there's a bunch of houses that are already noncompliant, and we're going to apply an overlay to this set of blocks where the development standards are different in order to ensure that if you choose to redevelop your house into something that's broadly the same, you won't necessarily have to go through a, through what I assume is a more onerous CUP exception application process."
Yeah, it could. There's pros and cons to that approach. I think that it would require a little bit more discussion and further evaluation how we actually designed, because I understand what your intent is, is to, when we bring a project forward, we're not penalizing them because they're not conforming. This is actually what we want. This is the outcome of what we want. And in that sense, the code is doing what it's intended to do, is to, you know, instead of this one-size-fits-all approach, we do have exceptions that allow projects to move forward even if it doesn't comply with the broader standards, but in the local, more neighborhood context, it does.
Thank you for that response, Roscoe. I think that question probably should be raised in the form for residential design standards when we have that opportunity. Let's focus our comments a little bit more on the specific project right now. Given that the CUP requirements, though, is there, or can you comment on if there's any rules or regulations governing pre-existing conditions? Because if it's already designed like that, and then there's minor modifications to the house, it already has that, you know, no setback on the second floor. So does this CUP still apply, the requirements still apply, or is there a provision for a pre-existing condition?
Yeah, the conditional use permit, excuse me, is intended to, it's for the extension of the nonconforming wall. So all they're doing is they're extending that wall. It doesn't conform, because it's just a two-story mass. There's no upper-story setback, and that's what the CUP is for, is just extend it outward. You know, if, we've had some instances where there was a nonconforming wall that's extended. I'll give you an example. If it was on the lower floor and the setback, side setback is five feet. If it was four feet and they're extending that wall, does it make sense to extend it or not? That's what we look for. In this case, it makes sense, because having it set in just for that addition really isn't aesthetically the outcome that we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. And one other question regarding the design of the porch. So they're asking for that allowance for the one-foot, three-inch overhang for the front porch, but the porch, it appears that it, the landing extends further out, so doesn't that take away the 20-foot setback from the front of the house? And what governs that? Is that a special condition, or is the porch not considered part of the structure?
The portion that's can a levering over is the addition on the second story above the garage. The landing on the front that you're referring to, the code allows encroachments into, certain encroachments into setbacks, and an outside stairway can encroach six feet into any required front yard setback.
The landing is much bigger footprint, but that's still, is that still considered part of the stairway?
Yes, yes, because you'd need a landing in order to have stairway.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff? Okay, so thank you, staff, for responding to those questions. At this point, we'd like to invite the architect or the owner or owner's representative to come up and talk about their projects. If you can introduce yourself and introduce the project and why it's required and some of the key features of the project.
Back to the council, all the, our neighbor, my name is Richard. One of the city council related and talked about a couple years ago. Okay, yeah, all right, thank you. Just talking about a couple years ago, one accident. Just talking about a couple of years ago, one accident is a tragedy. But I have a, I don't want to talk about that, but I only want to concentrate, the one is safety, always number one. From my experiments, 35 years, safety always number one. Number two is if people interesting and go to the Santa Clara, the court, super court to see in more detail. We got a mediation with city after around the December, before the newspaper published. And I don't want to talk because we have agreement with city mediation. Okay, and that's it. I don't want to talk about who's for, and I just want to talk today is for design review. I don't do the construction. And owner, homeowner is contractor, and he's going to do it. I just based on my experiments, follow the state code, follow the municipal code at the city and go through the whole process almost three years. The owner purchases a house like three years ago, four years ago, for the kids to go to school. Right now, kids already grow up. I'm very disappointed, the many reason stop. And this project from the day one, its neighborhood is not like a new development. Even exiting the house is not meet today's building code. They have a lot of situation in Bay Area, all the city. So as a designer, as homeowner, you want to have a beautiful house, but must match the neighborhood. That's for the day one beginning, I start from this point. I revise at least five, six times. And the city is very professional. I work with the old city, different designer, but finally come this solution. I think regarding the condition use permit and always following exactly the city requirement and also match the neighborhood. So what it can do is, I want to say, thank you for the city, the planning department work, and also I respect the neighborhood. Any question, I'm very happy to answer if you have. Thank you, thank you so much.
I'm the homeowner of 1165. We wait for this project to get approved for a few years. And yeah, thank you for your hard work for taking good care of us. And then, then thank you, Richard. Is really nice responsibility person to help us to follow, to follow our project for a few years. And I know this happening, well, like he said, is already passed and he doesn't want to mention what was happening. But the result, it comes out, he is a reliable person. And then I, and for his hard work doing our project period, he's really hardworking to commute and then for both the city and the homeowner to try to make it works. And then, yeah, we just want to, to, with our kids, we just looking forward to live in the beautiful city, nice weather. And then, yeah, hopefully you get it go through faster. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We may, after hearing public comment, may invite the architect back up to answer questions. Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments.
You have two speaker slips.
So if you can call the names of the speakers.
The first one is Carol Lau.
And is Carol in, okay, we invite you, Carol, up to the podium for a public comment.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Lau. Me and my husband live in the property, 1166 Glenwood Drive, Millbrae. Our backyard is connected to the property's backyard. So we are here today in order to understand the project, the design and the plan and how it is gonna impact our neighborhood and also our safety and our property. So in our opinion, our biggest concern is the safety. Safety maintaining in our property is the number one priority. Because this is our only house, this is our permanent home. We love to live in Millbrae. So I first of all have two questions. Is it okay to ask question?
You can state the questions, but after we hear comments, we can...
Yeah, from the agenda guidelines, I want to clarify that if the owner of the property plan to take down the whole property and rebuild the whole house or they are take down partial of the property and do modification and do some partial construction of their property. My second question is to, I, I'd like to get clarification about the first floor design. So I heard that there's some, there's, there's a plan to do an extension of the first floor, but I, I'm not quite sure is it, which side of the setback is gonna be having the extension. So our first concern of the property, of the safety is the drain gauge at, and one off. So if we can get clarification about the floor plant again, then we can have better understanding on the risk of, you know, drain gauge, reduce area for drain gauge at the backyard and the front yard. Their property is at the higher elevation than our properties. So we are at the downhill comparing to their properties. So if, we, we live here for 16 years. So there's no changes on our surrounding neighborhood houses. So we are very safe. Any rainy season, we did not have any problem. We have no issue. So we want to get more information in order...
Um, your time is actually on.
Okay.
Thank you. And the next person is Kevin Ho.
Hey, thank you, Carol. I think we got your questions.
Good year, good evening. Kevin? So my address is 166 Glenwood Drive. Basically, our house is actually, our house is actually next to their backyard. And the one I really concern is actually the how, their house elevation is much higher than us. So their one floor is actually on the second floor of our house. So with the balcony, balcony built out, I really concerned about the privacy. So our living room, kitchen, bathroom and bedroom are all on the backyard side. So they can easily actually overlook what's going on. So this is actually, I actually, one of my biggest concern again, drain gauge one-off during the rainy season is actually another big concern. And also, I'm actually working on it. So during the construction, there must be noise, dust, disruption, everything. Hopefully, this kind of concern.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, is that it for the speaker slips for the room?
Yeah, that's it.
Did you fill out the speaker slip? Yeah, if you could introduce yourself, so we can recognize you. Speaker slip is good for recognizing, but if you could just state your name and...
Yeah, my name is Gregory Haig. I own the property right next door to the subject on 1166 Glenwood Drive. I live there and I own it. It's been in our family since 1953, when the house was originally built. I guess my question is, I'm not even sure it's relevant, but can anybody tell me why it took so long for something to happen? I think the house was sold maybe a year and a half or two years ago and it's been sitting vacant all that time. Was there a reason why it vacant that long or that really none of my business?
I would like you to state your questions and then we'll have a chance for staff to address and/or the architect to address.
Do you want me to state the question?
Yes.
Okay. Can somebody tell me why the property was vacant for so long? I think it was sold at least a year and a half ago.
Right, so...
Well, I was concerned about squatters, things like that occurring. And I was surprised the city didn't say something because the property was so vacant. And I suppose somebody could buy a house and just leave it vacant, but I would think the city would have something to say. Yes, no?
Well, we'll answer the questions along with the other questions. But if you could just, yeah, state your concerns and the questions and then we'll have the architect come back up to answer.
So I state concerns and then go sit down?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, does anybody know how long it will take to do all the work? And third question would be, I know I'm a little bit uphill from the subject, but I'm assuming, I don't know if the additions will have any restrictions on what view I have from the property, my property. I have a concern about that as well. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, since we had commissioner comments for our staff and then the architect came up, why don't we just go in that order again? Additional questions for staff? Ask the staff to respond. Or the...
Sure, I can, I can respond to, I think there were three questions. The first two is probably best answered by the applicant, why the, why the property has been vacant since it was sold and how long the work is going to take. The last question I heard was views from the gentleman's property, 1169 Fernwood. There aren't going to be any view impairments. The addition is to the front of the house and there aren't any views in the direction of the addition. So we don't, we don't see any view impairment as a result of the location of the addition.
There was also a question about clarification of the addition. What part of the, what side of the house has the addition?
The addition is gonna occur to the front of the house. And it's gonna be extended approximately... Approximately nine feet to the front.
So we're extending the front of the house nine feet?
Correct.
Is there other, any other work on, you should mention that they, they're extending the front, the sides. So obviously, the sides will come up nine feet and then, but no additions or renovations in the back? Or we can ask the architect?
No, from the plans that the architect can confirm, I believe the, the existing footprint, except for the front, will remain. The, the front of the house will be demolished as well as the interior. There'll be a new front of facade in, in front of the house and then the existing walls will be extended towards the front.
So the walls in the rear of the house, they will remain the same footprint? But is there additional windows, doors? Obviously, for the ADU, there'll be another access door in the back, right?
Yeah, there'll be significant interior remodels, including windows as well.
But the side, that rear side of the house, it will remain the same footprint? It won't extend further back or...
Right, that is, yeah, applicant can, can confirm that, but from the plans, it does appear that's the case, correct?
I'm just checking off some of the questions that community raised. In staff's opinion, does not affect the view of the neighbor. There was, so please cover responses from the staff, appreciate that. At this point, I'd like to invite the architect back up to answer some questions either from the commissioners. I think there was some issues raised about drainage and safety, construction in the back, noise, how long it will take to do the work. And any issue about, you mentioned about the length of time it took to get through the city plans. You mentioned about some of the revisions also that you made to the plans. You said you submitted like three revisions. And did any of those revisions address issues about safety or drainage?
Okay. Thank you. I want to answer this question. Right now is called the planning department, planning rebuild. After that, going to do the construction. When they do the construction, they supposedly have more detail how the drainage is going to and where the water and the slope is going to be. The bottom line is city have very strict regulation about where the waters go. For example, the down spot, down spot of water, we, we need to go to the, through the front drainage, go to the spot and, and use that spot like well to aggregate the landscaping. That's very basic, all the water not supposed to go to the neighbor. And we do the design, city building department will pull it. Regarding the safety issue is, the city have a very strict measure and requirement. All the contractor need to be follow. That's very basic for the construction during the construction period. So another, another question is how long should we take? That depends is when got the permit and the contract, construction like this one depend the construction company normally take about 12 to 18 months like this project. And I think the old question be answered.
If you can mention the revision, some of the revisions that you made to improve.
Yes. We, in fact, the reason takes so long is owner, after purchase house, I start to draw the plan. But draw the plan, this very tough job because owner tell me many story about in the city, very straightforward. We need to do the very detail work. I submit a revision during this period and I think a city planner changed twice. And some city planner already left city. And also they have COVID period. So that's, that's, that's areas. We all have some excuse, sick, whoever the reason is. But I'm so appreciate that later on, the city pick up very quickly. So then some move very fast and very straightforward. In fact, I give you one example, the city requirement very strict. Even the rendering, we do the three times rendering. Each time cost like $1,000, more than $1,000 cost to owner, like just very small. Like just very small change, city still want to do it, because they want exactly same. Like we have the material board here, do the exactly same like after finish. I'm so appreciate, city is very serious consideration for this one, and the neighborhood will be happy. Thank you.
Okay, so if this time commissioners have questions for the architect? If you can speak into the mic, Mr. Quigg.
I'm looking at the... I'm looking at the rendering, and why did you put like an entrance underneath the stairs?
Uh, it means...
Right here, is that an opening?
Oh, yes, that's opening.
Why did you do that?
Uh, city not allowed. City, according to the code requirement, is when the close it, first version is close it, and then city have comment, it's not allowed. Because they count the square footage. They can't square, any close more than seven feet, they can't square footage.
Yes.
And because the roof we over have a porch, at that moment, they can't square footage. That's reason we take off the wall and the post, right now have a decoration, yeah.
Can you do anything else?
Yeah, I do.
It just looks...
I do like, trust me, that's the most tough job for me.
I mean, I'm looking at that, and it detract, based on my visual, it detract from the house.
So they have many way to do that, but I try, but as my professional, that's the best solution for myself, for my eye, it's enough for myself. For after finish, people pass through, that's the best solution. Because each house, individual is different. You cannot copy the same, you must according to this individual house, how to make more sense. The people come by, so, oh, suppose be like that.
Well, I just put...
Thank you.
It would be an entrance to the ADU or something, you know, I just...
ADU in the back, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other question I have is, in today's environment where the roofs and the roof lines are flat or much more, and you're putting in a totally different roof line and a different direction, they're mostly all hip roofs and, I mean, it looks okay, but I'm just wondering, what made you decide to make this change?
Before the roof is the two by 12, that's mandatory requirement for the composition single roof. But the two by 12, you make a house if depend different design. Like this design is look like, you know, the head too flat. To make proportionally, the idea is four by 12 or five by 12, that's we take, yes.
Okay, I mean, it's your house, but it just, to me, doesn't look like it fits in as well as it could. And most of those homes in that area have more of a more modern straight line than this one that you're creating now, but if that's what they want.
We have one page is called the street scape, and the street house on same line, on the same size, that's comparable.
Yeah. The cantilever doesn't bother me at all, I think it looks nice, but I don't know, that hole underneath the roof, I wish you could do something to it, but if you can't, you can't.
Any other comments?
No.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go over to Sam.
I have a similar question, Commissioner Quigg, about the space under the stair. It seems odd. Staff, could you explain?
Yeah. One of the first iterations of the plan showed that area under the stairs is a storage room, which technically counts towards our floor area. Because that area underneath the stairs is slightly encroaches into the front setback, you can't count as floor area, because it's a permissible encroachment. So the architect decided to open it up, so they show that it's not going to be used as storage. But one alternative to that is just filling the entire...
So it's not accessible from any side?
Yes, correct.
Then that would be, okay.
That would be acceptable.
Because I do worry that it will still become a storage, but now it's visible storage, right? Possibly, whether or not. I'm not entirely in love with the brick veneer. I understand that's a personal choice and it's a matter of taste. I think there are some detailing that you'll need to pay very close attention to with the brick veneer, especially when it wraps on, I think on the left hand side of the house, there's a way to resolve it. On the right hand side, where it meets the window sill, there'll be some attention needed on that side. I actually think the color palette and the material palette on the top is very contemporary. The color contrast, actually, the dark gray punctuates your stucco. And so I think the brick actually detracts from it. I would personally find something that's a little bit more modern, like a wood veneer, or even just have clean stucco throughout. Just, you're right, and I don't know if your intention is to mimic what's, I think there's a house next door, and there are two houses to your right that also had a similar brick veneer at the stair. If that was your only intention of doing so, I would ask that you rethink whether you truly love this, right? Because it's an investment and you're going to be living here for a long time. Secondly, I think if, when, and I assume you would proceed with this project, I think there, I spent a lot of time on these plans, I think there are a lot of cleanup and some inconsistency you could go through, some graphical inconsistencies, some text inconsistencies, most of which I don't think is within the purview of this commission, so I won't go into details of those. I think the stormwater management will be key. I did see on the very last page, there was a checklist, even the first checklist. I didn't see how some of those requirements were reflected in the landscaping plan. So I don't know if that's something for public work staff to review when this project gets to them, or if it's something the applicant could take another look and just to make sure those are consistent at your next iteration. I think that would be appreciated. You mentioned downspouts, typically we do see downspouts in either, if not the rendering, then some of the elevations. Do you, can you explain where you plan to place the downspouts in plan?
Okay, first question is, you said about the brick veneer. Okay, city have a mandatory requirement, when they do the housing franchise, it's curpial, you need two different material. But the brick, because of floor, is brick. And the transition from floor to the top, it's brick also represent a traditional country. That's mixed with the, mixed with the stucco or also mixed with the siding. This mix together. So this is number one question. And also, number two is, city give me the comment, request a brick. Okay, this is number one question. Number two regarding the, for the irrigation, something like that?
The downspout.
The downspout, okay. So we, this, again, this belong to the design review. When we submit the construction drawing, they have a grading and drainage plan. That's grading and drainage plan, including this, how to deal this and how the detail this. We have that one, it's not submitted yet. We go to first step when planning approval, the second step, we're going to provide it, and all the detail there. Thank you.
And you mentioned the point about the brick paving on the driveway. I noticed in the plan that you're planning to reuse all the existing brick pavers, is that correct?
Existing the brick paver is too much, it's not meet the brand landscaping criteria. We need to take up part of them. And when they take up part of the brick paver, we need to planting the new tree and flower. We have a landscaping plan, so this, yeah.
Okay.
Existing too much.
Okay, but you're not, but you're not planning to use new material? You're planning to use the same?
Uh, depends, it's a damage, we definitely sure, because the owner live by themselves, they want to build for...
Okay, so replacing kindness, what you're planning on?
Yeah, they can build it, yeah. Thank you.
Just to close off a little bit more of the details about the drainage. So I see that in the renderings, the slope of the land, it kind of slopes from higher to the right and slopes to the left. But on the topographical survey, it doesn't show a big drop off in the backyard going down to the rear of the yard. Can you talk about, is there any issue that you foresee? Is there's a special condition of steep slope or drainage issue that needs to be addressed?
Sure, for the total survey, that's accuracy. But when we do the drainage plan, depend how the water go, we need to modify slope to meet the basic requirement. Regarding the rendering, rendering just a concept, different angle give you a different perspective. Maybe, you know, from the front or from another side, maybe see different. But, yeah. The most important thing, when we provide construction drawing, they have very detail there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the architect? Nathan?
Yeah, so in terms of the, one of the questions from the public was about the degree of demolition. And in the front, under the project description, it says you're, my understanding is that you're just going to demolish the front wall, the, basically entire front wall, I guess, just the front of the house. But then if you're extend, if you're extending the, if you're extending it, you'll have to probably redo the whole roof too, right? So you're also going to take the existing roof out and put a new roof on?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, so basically just, so it'll just be the roof, the front of the house, and the three other sides of the building will remain?
In fact, when the construction joint provided, is when they do roof, roof, structural framing, most the existing roof will be demolished, because the slope's different. So basically it's a new roof. New roof, and also you see the demolition plan, I think it's, it's show this elevation and the floor plan, that's a dash line, you can see all the wall, almost interior need to be demolished.
Sorry, all the walls?
Interior wall.
Okay, the interior walls.
You can see there, they show it very clear, yeah.
Okay. And then in terms of the drainage, so I think you mentioned already, in the front, you're going to be net removing impermeable surface, because you're taking out the brick and replacing it with landscaping.
Yeah.
In the back, it's not, I can see that in the existing house, there is concrete and dirt. And then in the new, what you're proposing for the new backyard is brick, lawn, and dirt. So do you have a rough idea, and mulch, sorry? So like how much landscaping is there going to be in the back versus what's there today?
Okay, thank you, Nathan. First is for city requirement, every city requirement is same, only from the front, not required for the back. For the back, we only talk about for the drainage grading plan. So doesn't matter, when you do the house, you do the landscaping or not in the backyard, we still need to do the drainage grading plan, make sure the water dissipate, not go to the neighbor.
Right.
So we're going to provide later when they do submit a construction drawing.
Right.
Yeah.
Fair enough, but you know, in terms of getting people's questions answered tonight, that's what I can see, right? So I'm just, I wanted to ask and hopefully get some clarity.
For privacy issue, every homeowner, the rear yard always have their own plan. They want me to design, definitely, sure, I can do that, no problem. But the city is not review the rear yard landscaping plan, it is not required. So we can do wherever the owner wanted, as far as meet the building code, it's fine. Yeah, they can do flower, they can do grass, can put the, do the kids playground, oh, okay, but as far as meet the code.
All right, yeah, fair enough.
Thank you.
Uh, one other thing I wanted to ask about, so I actually really liked that in some of the later drawings, you call out where the ADU address number is going to be. I think it's really important to plan for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea where like mail or packages for your, for the ADU would be delivered? Just to make, that they have some space where they have, where they can collect their own things from?
In fact, for ADU, there are two requirement. First is the number, the house number. We're going to put in front, I think we put over here, front one, also on the back. The second is for the mail, where delivery, the city no requirement for that one. We can put the mailbox in the back, by the entrance, we have space over there. Yeah, no requirement, but we can put it there.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Even there's no requirement, I don't think the mailman is going to go around to the back of the house to put mail in a mailbox. I don't know.
Okay, can I ask you a question, Catherine?
Yeah.
Okay. The mailman, they have a guideline, they do delivery according to the address. We have an ADU address in the front, also we have arrows to show ADU entry in the back. So if mailman will follow their guideline, that suppose be delivered there, except you put signs here, the privacy, nobody can come in without permission. Thank you.
Why don't you just put it on the, or the other one?
I think some of these are more comments, right?
Thank you.
Appreciate that, appreciate your taking the time to answer these questions. I know that there's always issues about construction, privacy. Hopefully, we got an idea about the answers from the answers of the architect about some of these issues, so it looks like it's not a complete tear down, it's partial rebuild, but a grand new, complete grand new roof, and mostly extending the building out to the front. All these bit hooves, the applicant and the contractor to be expedient in their construction. Nobody wants to take a long time, because it adds to the cost. But yeah, there's ordinances for working hours and construction debris, noise, dust, et cetera. That's all in the standard package that the city puts out along with the approval package if it gets approved from the city. I think, thank you. Thank you, Richard. So at this point, let's see, did we close public comments? Okay, why don't we, if there's no further comments, then we have motion to close public comments.
Motion to close public comments.
Okay.
Okay, if we can have a roll call of them?
Commissioner Chai?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, so appreciate staff again and architect and the owner. I think that a lot of this question and answer so far, it can only help with the project to clarify the construction and the design, and then hopefully, you know, you're going to be neighbors with the people around you, so I want to address their concerns thoroughly. Now we move on to time for commissioner discussion, comments. One of the commissioners wants to start.
I just want to make a comment that, to the neighbors with your concerns. If you have any other questions, I know staff is very good about answering questions, so you can get a copy of everything.
And related to that, I believe the plans are accessible for viewing, correct? Even before this meeting? Okay, so want to make sure that neighbors are aware that they could access the plans through city hall.
It always has, you know, benefit for having this form, because people don't dig through the designs as well or thoroughly. through the designs as, as well or thoroughly, so it's good to take the time, even though the commissioners look at the plans and the drawings that we reiterate and confirm with the architects about the intent and the drawings and the plans. So we do that in this public forum here, even though, you know, we could just sit in home telecommuting and just go through and dig through the plans and drawings, it's good to have the open forum where we discuss it. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Davis?
Hi, I want to say it's actually lovely design. It is a good update to a Meadows elevated rancher. I like the roof line, that is much more interesting than a plain old flat roof. And the arched thing, while it might be different, I'm sure you can decorate it appropriately, but it also breaks up a big block of brick, which I think would be less attractive than the nice archway. So I think it's a great design.
Through the chair. Wanted to commend the applicant, the architect, designer on this. One of the reasons why it took a little while for us to bring this forth commission is because we worked with him on the design, the actual product that you're seeing before you this evening. The first version, when the plans were submitted, and we can, we'll share what that elevation looked like when first saw it. So this is, we worked with him to, to add more details, a little differentiation in the materials in the front, so you can see the differences between what we first saw and how we, what we did to, to improve the design. So just a little bit of context.
Okay, thank you, Roscoe. Other commissioners?
Well, seeing that, I do appreciate the, the work, and I do think it's an improvement from that first version. Overall, I'm always encouraged to see new permitted projects coming through town. I think in terms of safety, it only makes the neighborhood and the city safer to have new construction, permitted construction that happens. I think it was a good discussion we had about drainage, and I know Roscoe and Jennifer were taking copious notes to, either for themselves or for other divisions within the city as, as this project advances.
Nathan? Comments? Okay, yeah, it's been a lengthy process, we all recognize that the challenges we had with COVID, and appreciate the owner and the architect bearing with the city going through this process. You know, the, once it gets into, passes this design and permit approval, then hopefully your construction will go through, sell through a lot faster. You know, I'm sure that all the precautions were take, will be taken with the contractor being licensed and bonded and have insurance, and hopefully get a good contractor so that they can, you know, be wary of all the best management practices to minimize noise, dust, although there will always be some inconveniences, it's not like it's not being done. If it passes, there'll be some work. Looks like the setback, you know, the remodel is pretty modest. Twenty-seven hundred square feet, and there's plenty of setback in the rear at the expense of the front, so it's, you know, even needs into the setback for the front at the expense of not extending into the back, so there's good distance, thirty foot setback to the rear fence. So that would add to a lot of privacy, and then the houses behind the fence in the rear yard would also have setback too, so probably looking at least like quite a distance that allows for more privacy between the backyard houses in the back. So that's hopefully addressed. Yeah, as I mentioned. Yeah, it's been a long time in coming, so I don't see an issue with this, they've worked, the architect and the owner have worked a lot with the city to try to make this happen and address all the concerns, so they seem to be pretty diligent about addressing a lot of the concerns for the city, and hopefully, you know, there are going to be new neighbors and we'll, you know, discuss with neighbors any other concerns and other ideas such as privacy might be addressed by planting plan, trees, irrigation with landscaping. I see there's a lot of rear grass, and, and it's not all just covered in patio, so that that will help minimize runoff. So I don't see any, any major issues with this, but hopefully, a lot of the issues that were raised can be addressed. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Millbury approving a design review permit application to allow a three hundred ninety square foot second story addition and a three hundred seventy-eight square foot first floor addition to an existing two-story residence, a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper floor side setback and an exception request to allow the upper floor to cantilever one foot, three inches over the lower floor where a ten feet upper floor front setback is required in the single-family residential zoning district at eleven sixty-five Fernwood. Good job.
I'll second.
Have a second, if we could have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
And we should note that the action of the planning commission is considered final pending a ten day appeal period, payment of the required appeal fee. Anyone wishing to appeal the decision of the planning commission should contact the city clerk here in Millbury offices. With that, we thank you for everyone's time and inputs, and best of luck on your project. For those wishing to stay for the remainder, if not, you're welcome to leave. We'll go through the rest of the agenda here. Item, agenda item number five is new business. And before we get into nomination and the election, was there any other new business besides this nomination and the election?
Just this item.
Okay. Okay, so we're moving on to agenda, item five, nomination and the election of planning commission chair and vice chair for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Catherine?
Through the chair. Normally, as vice chair, I would be chair next year, however, I defer. I think it, this year has been a learning process, and I think I would like to nominate Nathan Chan for chair.
Second. Okay, should we do a roll call vote, or should we package it? Okay, so we'll do one at a time. So have a nomination for chair, or Commissioner Chan, with a second from Maureen Davis, first from Catherine Quigg, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Always feels weird.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Congratulations, Nathan. Okay.
Isn't it, isn't it not affected until July? I say this every year, but I swear, our, because our appointments don't end till the end of June. Okay? She told me, you all have to move your seats.
You're out.
Sorry, Ellen.
If you didn't know that, you are out. Congratulations.
Wow. Before I move on, I just really want to thank all of my fellow commissioners for this honor and vote of confidence. I guess I, it's my duty to ask if there are any nominations for vice chair for Millbury Planning Commission.
So I have a question. In the past, it's pretty much been some kind of protocol, and I wanted to ask, who would be the next one in line? Would it revert back to Maureen with Sam moving forward, or?
So I believe that the next commissioner in line, in line would be Commissioner Choi.
No, I don't think so either. I think so too.
Okay, then, I stand corrected. Commissioner Davis?
I make a motion that Maureen be vice chair.
I'd like to second that.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair. No, I'm not anymore. I've been demoted. Just like that.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
I think it would be beneficial to have more sitting time.
All right, that includes new business. Next item, item six is staff updates. But the next scheduled planning commission meeting, July first, will be canceled due to lack of item. Sorry, Commissioner Quigg?
I saw something on news bulletin about the appointment of, what's his name?
Yes, I was just getting to that.
Nestor.
You know who I mean.
Correct, yes. We had a vacancy in a senior planner position, and through a competitive recruitment process, Nestor Guevara, who was, was our associate planner, was promoted to senior planner. So he's been with the city for about five years now. Started an assistant planner and has demonstrated his knowledge of the code and the processes here, and he was selected for that position. So the city will next go, go out for agreement for the associate planner position that he vacated.
I'm very happy for him. If you could please tell him, we don't see everybody anymore, but I've been very impressed with him from the very beginning, so I'm happy and congratulate him from me.
I will. And one other item, so, and this is a pretty significant update. Just today, the city received an application for the redevelopment of the Aloft and Westin properties to Life Sciences Campus, consisting of two one point five million square feet of research development and life science uses for that, for those sites. So it'll be in, into twenty twenty-five, or, you know, the entitlements will take, you will need to go through extensive city review, but also go through the secret process as well. We're excited about it. You will see entitlements consist of a conceptual plan or a PD amendment, that property zone PD or plan development. Originally, when that PD was established several decades ago, it, the envision was hotels, obviously, that's changing, it didn't have any language about offices, commercial uses or life science uses, so it will be required to go through a PD amendment to establish those uses as allowed in that zoning district. And then with that also a specific plan, sorry, a precise plan for the actual entitlement of the, of the building, so it'll be five buildings as well as the construction of a hotel, about three hundred and three rooms, I believe. So we will create a page in the development projects in the city, and, yeah, and, and you'll, so you'll see that in the next, you know, over the next fiscal year. Congratulations, Chair Chan. It's a great project to, to, to review under your leadership. Sounds very exciting. Anything else? Oh, Commissioner Quigg?
So. I'm not gonna say anything, but anyway, how many rooms do we have there now, between the two?
I'm not hundred percent sure. My best rough guess is like around five hundred.
And so we're going to reduce our hotel? Footprint?
Yes, in, in terms of the number of keys, yes, but also, I think there's more to the story than, than, than just that, there's also economic benefits from the life sciences uses as well that outweigh potentially. We are undergoing an economic impact study to, to evaluate the economic impacts of that redevelopment.
Well, we just saw the, it came before us, and nobody knew anything about this happening? I mean, we all asked questions. I, I just have an easy feeling about transparency.
Well, as you know, the, the applicant received entitlements for Moxie Hotel, not too long ago, it was probably twenty twenty-one, I believe, so that's only three years ago, and, and since then, you know, they, they did submit for an extension for the, for the entitlements, for an additional three years, and I believe that may have been in twenty twenty-two, but things shift quickly, and, and we had just received the plans today. So it's an exciting project.
But it didn't just happen like that, it was, it was in the works before we actually voted.
There, we have had conversations with them, but again, you know, nothing, nothing was, was certain. We haven't seen the plans until today, we, we were really, the, the first full submittal, the turn page submittal was, was today.
Thank you.
Yeah, so actually, following up on that, some of Commissioner Quigg's comments, so I know that, you know, this commission in the past was considering the, the general plan update, council took that and made some revisions to it. I believe that they decided they were only going to, they wanted to make anything at BSL two and above conditionally permitted, so do we know what the applicant is asking for, for the site? Just BSL two? But, so it would still be, okay, got it.
No, the council didn't approve it.
That's what I mean, but I think that they, in addition to that, requested a conditional use permit for even biosafety level two.
Right, that was already, we had approved that with a, with conditional use permit, right?
Y-yes, so.
Yeah.
Correct.
When we approved it, it was conditional use permit, and we didn't know if and where and all that kind of stuff. There was a lot of ifs, ands, and buts when we went through with that.
Right.
And approved it.
The commission did recommend with the council
Right.
that this site be allowed to BSL level two. Originally, it was three, but, but the council didn't move forward with that, so it was, BSL two was the maximum. Anything else? Okay, then. Then, let's see, what's, oh yeah, planning commissioner announcements is next on the agenda. Any announcements from any commissioners?
Again, we won't be meeting before the Fourth of July. Again, just remind everybody, meet some bruises on the Fourth of July, starting at noon at Central Park, moving away from Broadway, more fun to sit on the grass and enjoy the fun and the music.
I'll just note that I had the pleasure of attending the, uh, parking management public meeting that staff told us about last time. I recall there were about ten to fifteen people there, and there were a number of other folks online. Uh, so, you know, people in the public are hearing about it, but, you know, there's always room for more public participation, and this is a very important initiative the city is undertaking. So hope to see more updates from that, but I thought the meeting itself was very, uh, very interesting and covered a lot of ground. Any further, last call for announcements? All right, then, I guess it's time to adjourn.